Hey, everyone. We're gonna wait one, a couple more minutes here. We have one more commissioner who may, may be on their way. Thanks for your patience.
He'll be available.
Will everyone please stand? Commissioner Langford made us in the pledge.
Join us in pledging allegiance to our great flag by facing your right will be reversed.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Staff roll call, please.
All commissioners are present with the exception of Chair Rosin and Commissioners Elmore and Guzzano who are, who are excused this evening.
Hopefully, we see them. Okay, we'll get going. Item number one, the election of officers. This is the time for the annual election of the chair, vice chair, and secretary. Nominations do not require a second, and a majority vote is required to elect. We will now elect the officers. Nominations are now open for chair, vice chair, and secretary. Do we have any nominations?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Tristan Harris as chair, David Salina as vice chair, and John Langford as secretary.
Staff, can you take a vote?
No seconds are required, so you may move forward if there are no additional elections proposed. The motion carries unanimously for that.
Congratulations, Vice Chair, Secretary Langford.
Congrats.
Okay.
For the rec, excuse me, Chair Tristan, for the record, can we take a vote?
A proper vote? Do you want to do a hand vote? I didn't see it come up, so.
Yeah, I was looking for it.
Do you want to just do it by hand, or do you?
Yeah.
Okay. Ready? Please vote.
Now let the record reflect that.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
Fantastic. Okay, public comments. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda tonight, that are generally within the purview of the planning commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items?
Chair Harris and members of the planning commission, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, congratulations on your election. One item that is generally on the agenda, but is not on the agenda tonight is the approval of minutes from your last meeting. I hope that they are simply delayed and will not be non-existent. It's good to have minutes of your meetings to refer to. And the second comment I wanted to make regarding that last meeting that you had, as I recall, you had a single agenda item, and after the public comment on that item had concluded, one of the commissioners told the public not to blame planning commissioners for your decisions because your role is black and white. You only decide if a project meets our municipal code or does not. I apologize if I'm misunderstanding what we're told, but I wanted to take some exception to that characterization of what your role is. My understanding, if a decision is something meets the code or does not, is black and white. That is what's called a ministerial decision, and that's up to the city staff. And indeed, when something comes to you, they have made those ministerial decisions that where compliance is black or white, that the project meets those or needs some variance because it does not. But the things coming to you are because there are decisions in our municipal code that require judgment and discretion. And if a matter had nothing at all that had any discretion in it, there would be no point having a hearing. So I think your decisions are not black and white and simply a matter of compliance, but they do require judgment, and you do have discretion over whether you approve or don't approve something. As Assistant City Attorney Summerhill pointed out, that particular matter had to do with multifamily housing and recent changes to state law. Limit your discretion on that very strongly, so you have very limited discretion, but I think you still have some. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. See none. Thank you for your comments. Moving on to the next item. Request for continuance to the staff. Are there any requests for continuances?
There are no requests for continuances tonight.
Do we want to address the meeting minutes? Are we gonna, do you want to push that to the end?
No, I can just respond to the meeting minutes.
Sure.
The service that provides the minutes was unavailable to complete the minutes in time for this meeting, so for the next agenda, we'll have two sets of minutes to review and approve.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Item number two, the Tracy Residence variance, PA 2023-0200. Location is 1020 White Sales Way. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Harris and commissioners. My name is Jenny, and I'm the planner for this Tracy Residence variance, PA 2023-0200. This project is located at 1020 White Sales Way. This is within the Harborview Hills area of Corona del Mar, and the property is in a neighborhood that has varying front setbacks. This project in particular has a large 50-foot front setback, and this project is requesting encroachments within that front setback. Wanted to start off with some background. This project originally came in as a zoning code amendment in May of 2023 when they first applied. The zoning code amendment would have permanently changed that front setback from 50 feet to requested 21-foot front setback. We scheduled this for hearing in September of 2023. However, that same day before we could make it to hearing, it was removed from calendar due to lack of support from the HOA. In particular, they did not approve changing the front setback to 21 feet, and they would not have approved the project should it move forward to construction, which would have hindered the applicant from moving forward their project. Due to this, we spoke, we worked with the applicant to reapply as a variance request, which would be project-specific. So the applicant reapplied as a variance request in December of 2023. The project design and footprint is very similar to what was requested for the zoning code amendment. However, this would have allowed front setback encroachments in the front setback without actually permanently changing that front setback. It was scheduled for hearing in May of 2024. However, again, before we could make it to hearing, the applicant removed this item from the calendar. At the time, we did not receive full details as to why this was to be removed. However, they were considering withdrawing the application completely. After it was removed from calendar in the same month, May 24, 2024, it was found that a code enforcement case was open for the property due to unpermitted construction, and staff conducted a site visit in June 4 of 2024 and saw there was substantial construction done on the property without permits. And since then, staff has been working with the applicant and property owner to address those unpermitted constructions, as well as to move forward with the addition of the previous request for the front setback encroachments, which brings us here today for a planning commission hearing for the variance request. This picture shows the pre-construction conditions back in 2023. The image on the left shows the stairs that lead up to the property that sits high up on the property due to the slope on this property. And the second picture on the right shows this steep driveway of the original driveway that goes up a steep slope and leads to the existing garage sitting high on the property. These pictures shows those unpermitted constructions. On the left is where those stairs were. Now there's a large gate and fences built that are over height, that exceeds the allowed height of the zoning code. And on the right is a straight-in driveway, as the previous driveway was completely removed to construct a straight-in driveway approach to what appears to be a garage. However, this does not meet the definition of a garage, as the interior clear dimensions do not meet the size requirements, and this area is used more for storage at this time. So this variance request is to address and remove the unpermitted construction that was done on site, in addition to allow construction of encroachments in the 50-foot front setback. Particularly, there is a new three-car garage that is 29 feet in that setback, and a bedroom addition that's 13 feet in the setback. These plans show that request. That thick black line is the property line, and the red line is that 50-foot front setback. The first yellow shaded area at the top is the bedroom addition, which is 37 feet from the front property line, where a part of it is within the front setback. And the second shaded area below is that three-car garage with 110 space that is 21 feet in from the front property line, about 29 feet within that front setback. In addition, there is that new straight-in driveway approach highlighted in purple to provide better access to the garage that would be built in the front setback. Facts in support of the findings for this variance includes the property does have that steep driveway. As seen in the picture of the previous driveway before it was removed, that driveway slope exceeds 15%. It's about 20% slope that, and 15% is the maximal out slope of the Newport Beach Municipal Code. Second, that driveway approach had a big safety issue. When exiting the property from the vehicle, it's difficult to see pedestrians in oncoming traffic when pulling out the driveway. So a straight-in approach would provide more safety in the egress from the property. Next, as previously mentioned, this neighborhood does have staggered setbacks that were established on a setback map S-11A, which will be looked at closer on its separate slide, which has a range of front setbacks from 13 to 52 feet. So this property is on the higher range of front setbacks for this neighborhood. And finally, there is a neighborhood compatibility with the proposed design, as most driveways in the neighborhood have a straight-in driveway approach compared to this property would have the large driveway going up the property. So this is a setback map S-11A with the staggered setbacks. All the numbers shown here are established front setbacks in this neighborhood. As you can see, there's a big range of varying setbacks, particularly on White Sales Way itself. The lowest front setback is 13 feet, and the highest is 52 feet, with this property on the higher end with a 50-foot front setback, which makes it difficult to construct on the property itself. This area view shows the neighborhood compatibility. The areas highlighted in green shows a very typical straight-in driveway approach that all the residents have in this neighborhood, whereas in purple for the subject property, the previous driveway had a large sloping driveway that sloped to the left before the vehicle had to make a right turn into the garage. So the proposed driveway would utilize a straight-in approach that's more compatible with the neighborhood, matching the existing homes nearby. Some of the relevant conditions of approvals included in the resolution is that condition of approval number seven, which requires all unpermitted improvements shall be removed unless permits are obtained from the city that comply with the Newport Beach Municipal Code. Additionally, condition of approval number eight, that requires all fences, hedges, walls, and retaining walls to comply with the Newport Beach Municipal Code, particularly because this request isn't changing the front setback, it's only allowing certain encroachments. So any walls, fences, hedges in that 50-foot front setback must comply with the height requirement of 42 inches. Several of the unpermitted construction exceeds that and must be removed to comply. Staff would like to add an additional condition of approval and to include a hold on final inspection will be placed on the permit for a final walkthrough from the planning department to ensure that all unpermitted construction has been removed unless permits can be obtained from the city that comply with the Newport Beach Municipal Code, to ensure that all unpermitted construction is addressed before final inspection is completed. Staff is recommending to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA under Class 1 and Class 5, and to adopt this resolution to approve the variance. In addition, staff has also been in communication with the HOA and Architectural Review Board, and they have also provided their conditional approval of the project. Thank you, commissioners. I'm available for any questions. The applicant is also available for any questions.
Thank you, Jenny. It's a great report. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Commissioner Liefert?
Thank you, Chair Harris. Ms. Tran, the garage, is that what we're calling below grade as far as the plan? I was looking through the plans, and so is the final grade, so is the garage fully below grade, I guess is my question?
Yes. So after removal of the driveway, the grade is now lowered, and the garage is built at sidewalk level, which is below the existing grade before the construction, correct?
Okay. And the home and all of the livable square footage is at grade above it beyond? And, and how do the, how do you get from the garage up to the main residence?
From the garage level, there is a sort of vestibule walkway that leads to an elevator that moves up. That, that is not in the, in the setback area. That's completely within or behind the front setback, but there is an elevator from the garage level up to the livable area.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. A quick question. Can you go back a couple slides to the one that had the driveways in green? Thank you. Looks like on the setback map, the one that's two houses to the left here has a 52-foot setback. Is that, is that setback 52 feet, or is that something less?
I believe that house is built 52 feet from the property line.
And then you show a property at 1014 White Sales Way with the garages right up to the, to the sidewalk. Where is that on the?
1014 is located to the right of the subject property.
Oh, excuse me. Okay. Okay. Okay, sorry. I didn't have a chance to swing by. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Reed?
Sure, thank you. I think Commissioner Saline answered my question, but is, is this the only house currently in the neighborhood that has the driveway that starts from the right and goes up the hill all the way to the left? It looks like the, the rest of the driveways are pretty much a straight shot to the driveway.
That's correct. All the other properties have that straight-in driveway approach.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tran, was there, was there any clarity on the reason? I mean, I was, saw that, you know, we couldn't figure out why it was that these setbacks were so, I mean, I imagine it's the slope, the curvature of the street, but any more, any more clarity from staff's perspective?
There wasn't anything concrete found in the research. However, it's believed that the setbacks are due to the views, and these, based off the topography, kind of help the views for all the neighbors above it.
Kind of restrict the massing, it seems like.
Correct.
Perhaps. Okay. Sure.
Just one more question. Was there any comments from the Harborview Hills Community Association with, to the new proposal?
Um.
I didn't see any.
They have an approval, approval letter.
Oh, was it in the package? I'm sorry. Excuse me.
They, they provided their conditional approval letters, which are attached in the staff report.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Must not have gotten that.
It's okay. Commissioners? Okay, thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. Does the applicant want to make a presentation or comment?
If we could first just announce any ex parte communications.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just a moment. Commissioners, any ex parte communication?
None.
None?
None.
None.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation or comment?
My name is Ron Thorpe. I'm with CDA Light Associates, and I'm the architecture firm representing Mike Tracy for the home. I brought a set of plans that if there's any, I'm pretty much sure any questions that anybody has, I'm more than welcome to answer. It's pretty straightforward, based on the staff report that Jenny put together and everything. So we're just asking that we'd hopefully get this approved.
Do you agree with the recommended conditions?
Yes.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Does anyone from the audience wish to comment on this item? Oh, do you have something else to add?
You got it.
Your set.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone from the audience wish to comment on this item? Thank you. Please state your name.
Sure. My name's Mary Ann Soden. I'm a resident of Harborview Hills, and I'm the chair of the Architectural Review Committee. I'm here today to speak in support of the draft resolution that will set a site-specific variance to the proposed reservation, renovation at 1020 White Sales Way. I did want to just speak briefly about the setbacks. This community was developed in the late 50s and 60s. It's called Harborview Hills, and that was a big selling point. And so I think if you look at how the lots are varying in size, the setbacks were designed to ensure that the homes would complement each other and not get in each other's way. I was not part of developing that in the late 50s, but I've seen the marketing material, and I believe that's really the fundamental reason. As part of our community review process, the proposed envelope is staked, and that staking is reviewed by the neighbors and by the Architectural Review Committee. On this project, the architect and Mr. Tracy staked the setback that is reflected in the draft resolution, and it was approved by the community members and the architectural review. So amending this 50-foot setback to 21 feet at the garage and then 37 feet at the house is in line and harmonious with our community, and we are in favor of this design. We have been in regular communication with the, with the planning department and have worked to be aligned and consistent with the city municipal code to make sure that our own efforts to enforce our guidelines and CCNRs were complementary and that this, this project would be appropriate from both our perspectives. I will say this variance is a crucial contingency for this project in the development of the Tracy property. It's a requirement of our design approval, and I encourage the commission to approve the resolution and the conditions as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. S. Next speaker?
Chair Harris, members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. First of all, it seems rather extraordinary that somebody would have an application before you and then withdraw the application and go ahead with the project as if you had approved it. It's not clear from the staff report whether there's any consequences to doing that, or you just pretend it never happened. As to the visibility issue, which is claimed to have prompted the need to change the driveway, when I look at Figure 1 on handwritten page four showing the driveway before it was demolished, there, there is a little angle there, but the visibility problem seems to be more a matter of the vegetation and this wall that's sitting next to it here on the side. And so I'm not great at reading plans, and I didn't have a lot of time to look over the current proposal, but I have no idea what the wall is doing there or what its purpose is. And so in, in the new plan, are you requiring that to be lowered to remove the safety problem that that obviously creates? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? See none. Does the applicant wish to respond to anything? Last words? Okay, thank you. To staff, any comments for the record?
Oh, yeah, sure. So the wall referenced in the photo, that's actually the neighbor's wall, and so they're not going to have the ability to, we can't force them to lower that wall. However, all new improvements are going to have to comply with the city's standards for wall heights within the front setback, including site distance requirements at the intersection of a driveway and a street. So that'll help improve the visibility.
Thank you. And then there were some penalties for doing the work without the permit. I believe you have to remove some structures, and then I'm sure there were some financial penalties with the permit.
Correct. So we, the city did open a code enforcement case against the property owner, and that was part of our efforts to work through this and develop a plan that'll comply compatible with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any comments? Motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start. Chair Harris, so, and part of my questions to Ms. Tran were about kind of the garage being below grade, above grade, and to me, part of the appeal from the street and the setbacks is kind of having the houses further off the street. So if you're driving on the street or you're walking on the street, that's part of the appeal of the area and the neighborhood. And, and it makes sense to me why they have setbacks of varying sizes, because these lots kind of fan out and kind of come back in, and they didn't want, you know, even though your lot became 12,000 square feet, they didn't want you to build like a monster house on that lot because your neighbors was a little bit smaller, so everyone kind of had the same developable building envelope. And you might have a longer front yard, but it didn't really give you a bigger, an opportunity to build like a bigger house there. So that, that would kind of be my guess from the 1950s, and that these setback maps have been approved. You know, each individual lot has their own individual setback that has been seen by planning commissions and city council members along the years. So I know that there's been some thought and look into it over the time. So I'm not, I'm generally not inclined to want to give variances, and I'm certainly not inclined to give variances to encourage bad behavior if they go and set forth on building whatever they want and then come, not even ask for permission, or not even ask for forgiveness, just kind of be like, hey, approve my project. So I don't particularly like that. I think the below-grade garage can kind of make sense given the circumstances, but kind of the additional pushing out of the master bedroom, I have some qualms with, because now that's within the, you know, the setback, and it's above grade, and it potentially blocks other views, even though the neighbor isn't here complaining about it. But I would imagine that they wouldn't care for it much. And so just discussion amongst us, that's kind of where I'm at, is I'm kind of open either way. I think the garage, we can figure out. I don't know about the master bedroom. I don't know if it needs to be a package deal, you know, if this was a project that was coming to us under normal circumstances, because they hadn't built it yet. I just don't like being under the gun, because now we're forced to approve something just because they spent a bunch of time and money, you know, behind the city's back. So it's worth discussing it now if we have a couple minutes and figuring out the right thing before they go on. It sounds like they're going to have construction to do there anyway, so might as well get the right scope of construction done.
Other thoughts?
Well, I certainly appreciate Commissioner Langford's thoughts there. I guess my feeling here is, you know, the 52-foot setback seems for, it looks like it's about, it's only a 150-foot lot, seems really extreme, and obviously, it's one of the largest in the area. While it is maybe a little bit bigger lot, it's not significantly bigger than some that are 20, 30 feet right next door. So, you know, if it, if, in my opinion, if it's at a minimum meeting the city's standards, and the HOA and all the community in the area has bought off on it, then, you know, I think that I'm inclined to say, while again, I don't like rewarding bad behavior for having built it anyway, I'm inclined to allow it, again, because I think that it's consistent with the neighborhood, the community has, has bought off on it. It exceeds our standards, and I think the, the original setback seems a little extreme to me in the first place. So that's my thoughts.
I would just jump in and add, in addition, I'm, I'm on the same page as Commissioner Saline. I think the only thing I would add to, to his train of thought is, I do think, I do like the fact that there is going to be a pre, an inspection that's going to occur prior to approval to make sure that all of the unpermitted activity is ripped out before they start the project. So I do think that'll be helpful in bringing the project back into code before they start with what's approved by the city and supported by the HOA.
I tend to agree here. You know, it's, it's almost with that turn in the slope, it gets penalized somewhat with arbitrary setback for having a larger lot, you know, having the only sloped driveway. I think the findings are there for, for the safety aspect, as much as I, I'll echo it. I don't want to, you know, reward bad behavior. There's a reason we have processes like this, but it seems they've come around. They've done the right thing now, and I'd be inclined to support. So I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
A second.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Congratulations. Moving on to the next item, item, item number three, accessory dwelling unit ordinance, PA 2025. Item, item number three, accessory dwelling unit ordinance PA 2025-0093. This is citywide ordinance. Staff, will you please proceed with your presentation?
Oscar Orosko here with the planning division presenting the accessory dwelling unit zoning code and local coastal program amendment. To begin, I'd like to just provide some background. The city of Newport Beach originally adopted its accessory dwelling unit ordinance in 2017 and since its, since its original adoption, it has been amended, revised and updated several times, particularly to address changes to state law, which we all know is ever-changing and consistently being updated almost on an annual basis. The city has really taken a proactive approach to addressing the changes that the state has made in regards to ADUs, therefore updating their ordinance as soon as possible. The latest ordinance update was in February of 2023 and as part of that 2023 ordinance that was revised and updated, there was a rollout of the accessory dwelling unit website along with resources on that website in early 2023, really intended to provide homeowners and developers with a resource to understanding ADU law and understanding how to best fit that into what could turn into a project proposal for those properties. As part of those resources, there are things like standard plans as well as a safe ADU program, along with a step-by-step guide of how to go through the process. And really those initiatives that were implemented in, in 2023 are derived from policy action 1H of the six-cycle housing element, which is intended to really pursue or push the development of accessory dwelling units. And through those efforts between the, the website and all of the additional resources, the ADU to present, or excuse me, the city to present date has a total of 238 accessory dwelling units. And that's a total number, so it includes projects that have been constructed and final. That also includes projects that are currently being constructed or even currently being reviewed. In addition to the website, the city also developed a accessory dwelling unit ordinance summary intended to really take what is a complex ordinance that comes down from the state and create a readable, understandable and as easy as possible to implement accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So the matrix that's presented here on this slide is intended to outline what the current code is as far as how many ADUs you can have, what type of ADUs you can have, whether they be attached, detached conversions, whether you have single family or multifamily and whether or not you're in the coastal zone versus non-coastal zone. This, like I said, is really intended to help and assist property owners and developers in understanding our regulations and how to implement those. And this is really an outline of what the code is today prior to our proposed amendments. As part of our daily operations, the city monitors state law changes, particularly to, to ADUs. And in the year of 2024, the state introduced and approved three separate ADU bills, which are outlined here on this slide. I won't read them verbatim, but the biggest change through the three separate approvals includes the addition of allowing up to eight detached ADUs on lots with existing multifamily dwellings, which were previously capped at two, but not to exceed the existing overall number of residential dwelling units on the property. In addition, they've continued to streamline what are called the government code 66323 units by not allowing additional development standards other than what's explicitly listed in the state government code. During that year, the city was monitoring and working on drafting amendments to address those changes, which is in line with what we've done since the original adoption of our ordinance, really to be proactive. And something else that was occurring in that same year is the city was going through a housing element amendments that was submitted to the HCD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development, for recertification. And that was done September of 2024. Through that recertification process of the housing element, HCD went through and reviewed our current ordinance for ADUs. And as a result of that review, they issued a letter in October of 2024 outlining some of the deficiencies and need revisions necessary to update our ADU ordinance to comply with current state law. In that letter, they've outlined our next steps and how to revise and address those, those updated state laws that were addressed in the previous slide. In the staff report, there's a thorough and detailed analysis through a table identifying each specific comment and what the changes requested by HCD were, along with the proposed revisions and how the city's proposing to address those comments. So not only is the proposed ADU ordinance intended to comply with state ADU law and the most recent changes, but it's also intended to continue to comply with what our policies are to present day, both through the general plan as well as the local coastal program and our city council policies. So through implementing our proposal, we will continue to promote and incentivize ADU growth as well as increase supply of lower-cost housing in the coastal zone and encourage the development of ADUs to accommodate our city's growth and really help meet the regional housing needs assessment number for the city. With that being said, during the public comment period, we did receive a letter from the California Housing Defense Fund outlining two separate items related to our proposed amendments. The first of which is related to the allowance of up to eight dwelling units for accessory dwelling units on multi-unit family properties, which staff believes through the current draft of the proposal, it does incorporate that by adding a reference to government code section 66323, which includes the allowance for that. So we have carved that out within the draft language. In addition to that one comment, there's a second comment related to historic resources, primarily referring back to government code section 663, which is that, that section that does not allow the city to impose additional standards. Therefore, we will, or we are proposing an additional change other than what the draft resolution includes, which is depicted here on this slide. Section J, which is the historic resources section, is being proposed to remove the first sentence. And in addition to removing the first sentence, we are also going to be moving it under the development standard section. That way, the incorporation of the reference to 66323 government code section is encapsulated and the historic resources standards don't apply to those specific units that fall under that code section. Similarly, we are also proposing that same change on the title 21 code, just to ensure consistency, but no change, no, no differences in language. With that being said, staff proposes we conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA and adopt resolution number PC 2025-14 recommending city council approval. Just to note, the next steps for the, the proposal include going to the city council for approval, which we have tentatively scheduled for August 26 of 2025. And with city council blessing, we would then submit our local coastal program amendments to the California Coastal Commission for review and approval. This concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orosko. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. I've actually done an ADU in the city of Newport and it was, that table came very helpful. So the letter we got from HDF, is it your feeling that the, the changes that you made address the concerns that were outlined in this letter?
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I have a few. This is a lot, so I commend you guys for walking a tight rope here. Getting pretty jammed here by the state. When they talk about for the 66323 units, I saw a lot on parking being just kind of wiped out or not being able to be considered. They said off-street uncovered parking. I'm assuming that's driveways, things of that nature. So you just don't have to replace that if you do an ADU day?
That's correct.
Does that still, do you still have to, if you, if you built an ADU in that area, would you still have to comply with the existing setback for the build, the main structure? I think it, I think it said yes, but I, you know.
Unless specifically listed as a required setback, it would only be required to comply with what the 66323 government code section states.
One more time, unless specifically.
Outlined as a, like a standard.
Yes.
As part of the government code section, then it would not be applicable.
But if you had a standard 20-foot setback on a house, you got rid of the driveway, let's say it's a tri duplex or something, you put, built an ADU in the driveway now that was deeper, we just looked at some, right? It's some deep driveways. Would it still have to comply with the 20-foot setback?
I believe so. Yes.
Okay, that's what I, I just want to confirm. Sorry, this is like, it's a big deal. The other one I saw was for multifamily properties, you can essentially just frame in carports. Do you have ADUs now and they don't have to replace the parking?
That is correct.
Okay.
I would like to make a distinction though. In the coastal zone, the replacement parking is not going to be changing as it is something that isn't currently allowed and will not be allowed as part of the proposed amendments.
But if you have an eight-unit apartment complex and you have eight units of eight carports, spaces, you can essentially create eight ADUs and have no parking? Is that correct?
Outside of the coastal zone, I, coastal zone, I believe so, yes.
Everyone should read this, by the way. The, the last one I had said something to do with, again, the multi-unit ADUs if they're existing multi-unit. If it's not being, if there's areas within that are not being used as living space, they can be converted, again, with, with, you know, at will. And it, for example, be like a laundry room or something to that effect or, you know, a common area in the middle or something?
That's correct. So non-habitable space, so storage rooms or mechanical equipment rooms, et cetera of that state. And then I would like to just clarify on the previous statement that the conversion of existing space like a carport would be limited to the eight, the allowance for eight ADUs on a multifamily property is for detached ADUs.
Okay. Okay. So they'd all have to be separately laid out. Okay. But, but it's still, you could wipe out all the parking essentially?
Up to two.
Up to two.
Two.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay. Commissioners, any ex parte communication?
None.
None. None. Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on this item? Seeing nobody. Staff, any comments for the record? Okay, I'll close the hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any comments or a motion?
Seeing no comments, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, let's see, are we approving, adopting? What are we doing? We are adopt resolution 2025-14 recommending approval to the city council.
Second. Call for a vote, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, staff. Moving on to the next item, item number four, Coyote Canyon Landfill Gas to Energy PA 2022-063. Location is at 20662 Newport Coast Drive. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
My name is Jocelyn Perez. I'm a senior planner with the planning division. In the last public hearing item for your consideration this evening is the Coyote Canyon Landfill Gas to Energy Facility. So starting off with where is the project site? Coyote Canyon Landfill is located within the northeastern area of the city and what's commonly referred to as the Newport Coast area. The Coyote Canyon Landfill has four distinct areas. There is the main landfill on the west side of Newport Coast Drive. There's also the smaller East Canyon and South Canyon landfills. And then we have the project site, which is on top of a hill. The subject property is zoned open space and the surrounding area is also categorized as open space. It is part of the natural communities conservation plan. The main canyon landfill is designated as parks and recreation. Sage Hill School approximately 1,400 feet to the north is designated as public facilities. There is residential approximately 1,200 feet to the south. And then there is the pavilion's commercial shopping center at the southwest corner of Newport Coast Drive and San Joaquin Hills Road. Little background about the Coyote Canyon landfill. The landfill is owned and operated by OC Waste and Recycling. It received municipal solid waste from the early 60s until 1990. Interesting thing about municipal solid waste, as it breaks down, it generates what's called landfill gas that has to be managed. So the facility had a landfill gas to energy facility from the late 80s until 2015 that's pictured over there on the right, and it converted the landfill gas into energy. As the quality of the gas decreased, the landfill gas became inadequate to convert into energy with the technology of the time. So that facility on the right there was decommissioned and currently the landfill gas is, well, the landfill still makes landfill gas, so now it's just flared off rather than being converted into energy. As part of the decommissioning of that site, two telecoms were constructed and natural or native trees were planted along the perimeter of the site to provide screening of those telecoms. And a few years later, OC Waste and Recycling released an RFP looking for a new operator to manage the landfill gas from the site. So this is the project site as it exists today. There is a 12-foot perimeter block wall. There are, those are the flares that I mentioned in my last slide, blowers, switchgear, support equipment, a control building and those telecoms that I mentioned. So the project, the applicant proposes to construct a new RNG facility to take that landfill gas and convert it into a natural gas equivalent. They will install quite a variety of equipment. I'm not going to go into the, the details of exactly how that process works. The applicant has a presentation and will be able to explain a little bit more in depth of what type of equipment they're proposing. So I'll just go over the general site layout. We've got this area in purple where the processing will occur. There's an interconnection facility, new underground pipe that'll take that natural gas equivalent and inject it into a SoCal gas tie-in point. This is all within the confines of that block wall perimeter. There'll be a new fire hydrant, support facilities such as parking and a control room building. And all of the existing infrastructure that OC Waste has up there will remain. It will be protected in place and the telecoms will remain. As I mentioned, the site is zoned open space, so this is considered a major utility and major utilities are allowed in that zoning district subject to the approval of a conditional use permit and with environmental review and compliance with CEQA, which I'll go into a little bit more in my next few slides. So one thing interesting about the open space zoning district is the development standards are established as part of the use permit process. So staff has suggested setbacks, height, parking and floor area standards. The one I'd really like to discuss here is our, our height limit. The tele, I've, at the top, there is an elevation view of the proposed project along with the existing telecoms. The telecoms, as I mentioned, go up to 65 feet in height above grade. None of the equipment proposed as part of the RNG facility will be taller than the existing telecoms on site. The tallest piece of equipment will be that thermal oxidizer that'll be about 60 feet above the existing grade. The next tallest piece of equipment will be 40 feet, but the majority of the equipment will either be under that 12-foot block wall or just a little bit taller. The project requires environmental review under CEQA. An initial study and mitigated NAG deck was prepared by. was prepared by Placeworks on behalf of the city. That document was prepared in coordination with OC Waste and Recycling, the Newport Beach Fire Department, and South Coast Air Quality Management District. While the requirement for public review for an ISMMD is only 30 days, this ISMMD was released for a 45-day public review period. We released it in late November and took comments all the way through January. While not required for an ISMMD, we catalogued all five comments received on the document and responded to them. That response to comments is included in the draft resolution as exhibit C. We also have mitigation measures proposed as part of the project to take any potential environmental impacts and mitigate them to a less-than-significant designation. I won't read through every topic in front of you on this slide. However, I wanted to note that over 20 different environmental topics were studied as part of this ISMMD. And the majority of them either had no impact or a less-than-significant impact. And the ones that had a potential for an environmental impact have been mitigated to a less-than-significant level. And here, I wanted to give an example of what is a mitigation measure. So, for example, for biological impacts, the applicant will be required to do pre-construction surveys prior to any vegetation removal. During ground disturbance, a tribal monitor will need to be on-site to look for any artifacts. A fuel modification plan will need to be reviewed and approved by the Newport Beach Fire Department. And a traffic control plan to mitigate any potential impact during construction will need to be reviewed and approved. So, to summarize this project, the project will take landfill gas that's currently being flared off and will convert it into natural gas for injection into SoCal gas infrastructure. The existing onsite improvements, the telecoms and OCWR's infrastructure will not be affected by this project. The project's consistent with zoning and the general plan. The site is adequate and appropriate for this type of use as it previously supported this type of facility for almost 30 years. And the project includes mitigation measures to ensure that there's no significant impact to the environment. And on the right, there is a visual sim of the project with those two telecoms that I've been referencing. And that view is taken from the intersection of Newport Coast Drive and San Joaquin Hills Road. Before I conclude my presentation, I did want to acknowledge that a written comment was received at 4:00 PM today from the law firm Adams, Broadwell, Joseph, and Cardozo. Staff had limited time to review the letter. However, it appears that the majority of the comments in this letter are comments that were previously received on the ISMMD during the public comment period and have been adequately responded to as part of that response to comments. However, Placeworks is here today and can answer any questions about the content of that letter you may have. And with that, I'd like to recommend that the commissioners conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution to approve the CUP and adopt the MND. The applicant is here and has a presentation, if you'd like. And Placeworks is also here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Great. Very nice report. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Mr. Langford?
Thank you, Chair Harris. So, this property is owned by the County of Orange and the surrounding kind of unimproved land around that. Is that, who's that owned by? And what is the public's access to it? I'm kind of asking about hiking trails. Does it connect to the back, you know, over to the hiking trails behind Newport Coast and all that?
There are no trails through that area. And per our records, the city of Irvine owns the surrounding property.
Curious.
Chair Harris, I know that there has been some discussion with respect to potentially creating some bike trails and/or, you know, pedestrian trails, but I don't think that that has been brought to fruition just yet.
Any other questions?
Well, I'd like to see it happen someday.
Any ex parte communications for the commissioners?
None.
None.
None. Okay, I will open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation or comment?
Good evening, vice chair, commissioners, staff. I almost feel a little embarrassed. That was a really good presentation you put on, so. Be able to read it from here. Good evening, my name is Tyler Henson. I am the lead manager of external affairs for Arca Energy. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. So, I won't take up too much of your time. Like I said, your presentation was amazing. It's, you did, really did a good job. All right, we'll just jump right into it. Here we go. So, here, just from our team that are behind us, we have Nick Bauer, who's our director of RNG project development, and Befair Ennin, who's behind us, sitting here. Myself, Tyler Henson, and then our SEQA consultant, Placework. This was with Orange County Waste and Recycling, who is the owner and operator of the Coyote Canyon landfill. And we're partnering with them. All right, so, who we are at a glance. So, we are the largest renewable natural gas producer in the United States. We operate 50 sites across the United States. Sorry, 32 states, 50 sites in 32 states across. We have a, building a facility in Oregon across on the Pacific Northwest, stretching all the way to Pennsylvania. So, this is not our first rodeo. We've been doing this a while and we really look forward to doing a project here near town. One thing that we would like to stress for Arca is our safety. So, that is our core value and our highest priority. We follow all the rigorous health, safety training regimen to ensure that our operators are familiar with the equipment and the procedures. We have written, established policies that are site-specific for every one of our facilities. And they're designed to comply with local, state, and federal laws. A good example I'd like to cite that we're serious about safety, we have an incident response portal and our members have to report all incidents. Probably about two weeks ago, we had a gentleman there having a conversation. He got stung by a bee on the neck. He reported that through our incident response portal. So, we take this very seriously. So, we're, said we're fully committed through the whole process from when we start construction all through the life of its operation. So, here's just a picture description we like to put on of our benefits of an RNG facility. So, the one in the middle, obviously, is what's going on right now, the landfill with the gas collection. That's collecting about 80% of the methane, but it doesn't put it to any kind of beneficial use. It just gets flared into the air. So, with our facility, we're capturing that methane and CO2. And we're beneficially using about 90% of that methane and reducing those emissions. Here's just a chart of the emission comparison for post-project and pre-project. And if you have any questions on technical details, I'll kick that over to Placeworks, our team. What are the benefits? So, obviously, the greenhouse gas emissions reductions and improved air quality. Converting that landfill gas RNG significantly decreases emissions from the flared gas. And also, this process will generate revenue for the county from the sale of that LFG. And another question we've got for is what will the local communities notice? So, short-term impacts, obviously, for the community. There could be increased truck traffic, potential visual obstruction from, obstruction from the construction equipment, noise and dust emissions. But we're committed to work with the committee through this entire process. I remember in our first hearing, we had a representative from Sage Hill High School who came to our public hearing and said we're committed to working with them because one thing that came up and that we said that we want to ensure is the drop-off and pickup times. We're doing construction, so working with them to ensure that we're not going to be messing with those operations because I know how mad I get when I'm waiting in line to pick up my child in school, those long lines, and I don't want them to be any longer, so share their pain. So, we'll coordinate with them to ensure we're doing things right by them through the entire phase of the construction process and then also through the life of this project. After we're done building, we don't just get up and walk away. I'm here until that facility is packed up and gone. Or obviously, my predecessor, because these things could go for a while. I know you saw some photos of here. Just to run some more of these site simulations of what the facility looks like. You've seen those ones here. Additional photos, even enlarged, very hard to see. See on the left is the existing condition and then the proposed view. Here's another of existing condition on the left and then the proposed view, project, of what the project looked like. And then just a 3D rendering of the facility, close-up of what it would look like. That is the end of my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. Do you, do you agree with the recommended conditions?
We do.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, sure, I'll, I'll fire off. Thank you for the presentation. Two questions for you. What is the length of construction? And how long is the facility expected to operate for?
That is a tough question to answer of giving you an actual timeline of the construction. I can give you a range from anywhere from a year to five years. It just really depends on the whole permitting process, getting everything in a row. I just, I couldn't give you a real definitive lifecycle. And then also, how long the facility be up and running? It depends on the flow rates, what's the gas that's being produced here. So, I, I just, I really, I wish I could give you a definitive timetable, but I just, I can't. I'd be doing you a disservice.
No problem, it's all ahead.
Commissioner, please, Commissioner Langford?
Thank you, Chair Harris. Mr. Henson, 50 sites around the country. Do you shield most of them or camouflage most of them? What's the best way that you see doing that around the country? I see there was a couple of different view sims in our packet. There was kind of the tan or the camo. Are there other options? Is this the prettiest one you got for us?
So, we work with the local jurisdictional body over, over the look of it. You know, it really depends. We have some facilities, they're, they're in the middle of nowhere. And so, no one really cares what they look like. Other ones, obviously, that were a little closer. And so, they want shield walls. They wanted to blend in with the, with the surrounding canopies of the trees. So, it has to meet a certain type of green or browns blend in. But we work with communities to ensure that we, we need to blend these things in as much as possible. So, no one really knows we're there. I mean, that's, that's what we do.
Yeah, I know we've, we've gone through a lot of that with the telecom towers and faux eucalyptus tree towers and stuff like that. So, I just wanted to make sure we, I know our staff is on top of that, but wanted to see if there was anything else you guys did. But if you're taking our, our requests on that, then I'm sure they'll figure it out.
Chair?
Have you seen the letter from the attorney?
Yes, sir.
Have you, do you have any comments, thoughts on it? Does any?
I believe the responses to the comments done by staff and then prepared by consultation with Placeworks, I think are sufficient.
Okay. And then, and this is something that we can, we'll discuss up here, but just curious, you mentioned you working with Sage Hill. Would you, how would you feel if a condition was opposed? That you, you know, would limit traffic during their pickup and drop-off?
For an add, oh, an added condition there? Yeah, we'd love to have a consultation if that's what's needed. I mean, we've, we've met with them from the first public hearing. So, we'd be more than happy to talk about what that looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on this item? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Adam Marshall. I'm speaking on behalf of Orange County residents for responsible development. We're a coalition of individuals and labor organizations that advocate for sustainable development in Orange County, calling for a safe, working environment for its members. We're asking the planning commission today to have staff prepare a full environmental impact report as opposed to a mitigated negative declaration in order to comply both with SEQA but also to protect the health and safety of citizens, the city's residents and its workers. We submitted comments on the MND back in January, on the final MND in May, and additional comments today as soon as we could in response to the staff report, which includes analysis from highly qualified air quality hazards and noise consultants. These experts demonstrate that this project would result in significant unmitigated air quality, public health, and noise impacts, which are not currently addressed in the MND. Their comments constitute substantial evidence supporting the fair argument that an EIR must be prepared. First, I'll just get into a couple of these issues. The project would release fugitive air pollutant emissions from leaks from project equipment, which includes potentially hazardous emissions. The USCPA and the local air district require the city to both analyze and mitigate these emissions, even in these closed-loop systems, just like this project. Here, this wasn't done in the MND. This may result in unmitigated air pollution requiring an EIR. The second issue I'd like to touch on is that both the city's expert and our air quality expert found that the project would have significant public health and hazardous impacts from potential fire, vapor clouds, and other onsite accidents. You know, this is a risky type of project. The city's own study recommended preventative mitigation, including installing an emergency shutdown system, ignition controls, and hazardous area classification. However, I'll note that the mitigation, or the mitigated negative declaration itself does not include these measures as binding mitigation, leaving nearby residents, the workers, and the general public really exposed, excuse me, exposed to significant health and safety risk. These impacts must be analyzed and mitigated before the project can be approved. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chair Harris, members of the planning commission. My name again is Jim Mosher. And my comment on this will not be very well informed because I've not had time to read the mitigated negative declaration. I don't know if that was covered in the previous speaker's comment. When I saw this item previously on your agenda, one thought I had was about that 60-foot-tall oxidizer tower. And we didn't hear too much about that tonight. I'm not sure if it's hot or exactly what's going on in that. And I am curious if the environmental review considered the possibility that during a severe earthquake, the tower could collapse and fall over into this adjacent property, which apparently, this owner, the county, we have heard, does not own the property immediately adjacent. I, incidentally, surprised to hear, since this is very much in Newport Beach, that the adjacent property is owned by the city of Irvine. It sounds kind of strange. I don't know that it was ever part of Irvine. But, but anyway, has, has the far risk been considered? And if it's not their property, how would, is there a risk to start with? Has it been considered? And if it's not their property, how can that be handled? I would just, in the case of a severe earthquake, the city is going to be extremely taxed with other more urgent problems elsewhere. And you wouldn't want this starting a wildfire in the middle of that. So, that was my thought when I saw the tower. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Next speaker? Seeing none. Does the applicant wish to respond to anything? Oh, another speaker?
Chair Harris, we did receive the late-breaking letter from the union's attorney alleging the SEQA violations. We do believe that the response to comments does adequately address. Nonetheless, we do have the SEQA consultant that can respond to the specific comments that were made.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Dina Elshamas-Gaz from Placeworks. I was the project manager for this project. The city does want us to speak briefly in response to the letter that we received at 4 o'clock today. I will, we do have our air quality specialist with us, with me as well. Nicole is back there. there. I will speak to the comments that they raised with regards to fire hazards and the off-site consequence analyses. So, as, as city staff did already point out, none of the comments in this latest letter are new. We do have responses to all five of the, there were about six points in this newest letter. All have been responded to in the RTC, between the RTC and the response that we prepared for a letter that was received prior to the, the Planning Hearing Commission that was canceled. So there were three letters that we've received from the firm, the fourth one today. All of the prior three have been responded to in the RTC and a letter that's included in your staff report. And now, in terms of, I think the gentleman that just spoke, he did point to fire risks and the off-site consequence analysis. Now, in this letter, they do state that the off-site consequence analysis points out to, points out, points out some significant and unavoidable impacts. The off-site consequence analysis actually points out the fact that there are no significant and unavoidable impacts. That analysis looked into vapor clouds, jet fires, and toxic, toxic vapor clouds. So, two of those do relate to fire, jet fires and flammable toxic clouds. And what the analysis found was that, and also, one thing to always keep in mind with, whether it was the analysis in the ISMMD or the analysis in the off-site consequence analysis, it all, it all points to the worst-case scenario. So we're looking in both of those documents, and Nicole will talk to the air quality impacts, it's all worst-case scenarios. So when we're looking at these jet fires and the flammable toxic clouds, we are talking about worst-case scenarios. And even under worst-case scenarios, the only thing that that analysis found was that a jet fire could go 10 feet past that, the wall around the site in the northeast corner. So that was kind of the worst-case scenario, a jet fire going 10 feet past the wall. Now, there are trees around the site, and the consequence analysis did point to an area where there are currently trees there. So we did consult with the fire department. The whole ISMMD was put together in consultation with the fire department. We had several meetings with them, they've seen the off-site consequence analyses, and they were out on the site three times, and they marked the trees around the site that they wanted removed. So they, they saw the off-site consequence analysis, they went out there, they looked at the trees, they marked about 28 trees that they wanted removed. And those trees will be removed, as, as the fire department requested. We also put in a mitigation measure in the ISMMD, and this mitigation measure has now been implemented, to put together a fuel modification plan. And the fuel modification plan does point out to those 28 trees that need to be removed, along with other measures that need to happen around the site, so that we can mitigate any impacts from, A, a fire on the site spreading to the open space, and any fire from the open space spreading into the facility, so it's twofold. So between our consultation with the fire department, the off-site consequence analysis, and this fuel modification plan, which will be reviewed, it already has been reviewed by the fire department, so they have seen it. We did receive comments from the fire department, we made sure that those comments on the fuel modification plan were addressed. So between the fuel modification plan and a few mitigation measures in the ISMMD, and also the way that the plant is designed, there are a lot of, there's a lot of monitoring, a lot of sensors on the site, a lot of safety measures that are built into the, into the design of the, the plant, that is really going to mitigate those fire hazards to less than significant. And I, and like I was mentioning, this is all in consultation with the fire department, and they have seen all of these reports. With that, I think that was the only comment in this latest letter that's not air quality related. There is a comment about noise. That comment was brought up before, and it was addressed in the RTC. It's primarily concerns with construction noise. There was a noise analysis done for this project, also included in the ISMMD, and it, it shows a four-month construction period with very minimal noise impacts on the school and the residences, so that comment has been addressed. The other air quality comments have also been addressed, but we do want, Nicole is here to just speak, just briefly about how we address them and the issues that were
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Nicole Vermillion at PlaceWorks. I'll just be very brief. The commenter earlier mentioned fugitive emissions. I just wanted to mention that this is a closed system, so there are no fugitive emissions that are generated by the project that aren't addressed as part of the air quality permit that is being done through South Coast Air Quality Management District. The only other thing I wanted to point out, that South Coast AQMD is listed as a responsible agency. What that means is that if the city of Newport Beach approves this project, the applicant still has to go through South Coast Air Quality Management District for a separate approval. What that means is that South Coast AQMD was part of this process, they reviewed all of the emissions estimate provided by the applicant, and as well as PlaceWorks reviewing those permit emissions, before it was incorporated into the initial study. So we have confidence in the significance conclusions in the mitigated negative declaration. And let me know if you have any extra questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Deena and Nicole. Staff, you guys, anything to add, or we all said?
I wanted to respond to Commissioner Langford's comment regarding the color and the palette. We reviewed two possible options with that sky blue and that, that camo print, and we will determine a final design in plan check, so that will be addressed, and there'll be a hold-on final for planning to inspect, and to make sure it's adequate. And Commissioner Saleen had the comment about coordination with the Sage Hills School. We have a mitigation measure in the negative deck, neg deck, for transportation that requires a traffic control plan that is intended to be sensitive to the Sage Hills School. So we believe that we'll be able to prevent impacts to the school through that process. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll close with public hearing, bring you back to commission for discussion and action. Any comments or motion? Commissioner Langford?
Thank you, Chair Harris. I like that there were no incidents in the 30-year initial history of this facility, and now bringing in newer technology, I think that's great. So I'm all for that. I think we can find, I think I can find the findings necessary to approve the project. The one thing that I am interested in, however, though, is the fuel modification plan. I know our fire department's been out there, and our fire department has been doing a great job in Newport Coast, and getting, taking down a lot of trees that are at risk for fires, and that's a big issue, but the other reason and rationale for the trees around this project were to kind of shield that block wall from Newport Coast Drive, driving down there. It's just ugly, and so it's nice that the trees are there. So, I guess I would want to ask the applicant if, instead of only removing trees, if they could, I know the fire department probably wants to remove the trees that are closest to the wall, is what I can tell from the fuel modification plan, if they would, you know, if there's kind of like, take one away, add one kind of thing, to kind of help round out the shielding from the street side, from visibility from Newport Coast Drive, I think that would make the project even stronger.
I have nothing further to add, you covered my thoughts as well.
Motion?
All right, well, I will move to approve PA 2022-063.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations to the applicant. Moving on to the next item, staff and commissioner items, item number five, any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Item number six, report by the Community Development Director or request for matters which a Planning Commission member would like placed on a future agenda.
Good evening, Chair. Deputy Director, I'm Emilio. I just have two quick updates. For the August 7th Planning Commission meeting, we do have the Zink Residence, the Coastal Development Permanent Variance that was previously reviewed by the Planning Commission, and was ultimately continued to allow the applicant additional time to address commissioner concerns on design and setbacks. And so we've been working with the applicant, and we'll be preparing that for the next agenda.
Which one was that? Sorry?
Zink Residence, it was on Bay Shore Drive in Cronomar. And then, just the other update I have for the commission, is today we did receive an appeal of the Ford Road Townhome project that was approved by the Planning Commission at the last hearing. That appeal was filed by a law firm representing a group identified as Save Our Sports Park. So we'll be preparing, we're working with applicant to get that ready for a city council review, and that concludes my updates.
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on these items? Motion? Seeing none. Are there any requests for excused absences, commissioners?
I'll be gone on the August 7th meeting.
We did it today?
We just did?
Yeah.
First item.
Oh, I know we voted, but like, we're sitting in the right seat.
Oh, I don't know. Send your request later.
We'll get coordinated at the next meeting.
Hey, I did want to send best wishes to you, if he's watching, I doubt it. Commissioner Elmore and his wife, Hayden, they had two twin boys, so they have four boys now, and we want to wish them all the best, so.
Absolutely.
Cheers. All right, adjourned, thank you.